Yes, okay, I'll call the meeting to order at 8:38. Good morning, everybody. We'll do a roll call.
I'll do a roll call because I'm physically present to acknowledge it. Ralph Holmes.
Here.
OJ Sutherland.
Here.
Tom Halverson.
Here.
Jim Lewis.
Here.
Pat Martell, not prepared quite yet, and Steve Seago.
Here.
Okay, will you clear your eyes and join me in the... Where is the floor? Quiet. Kind of hiding in the corner. You gonna put it somewhere or is that where it goes? There. Thank you. There we go. Ready and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as we see it?
Staff would not have any.
None, okay.
Liz, will you note that Board Member Martell is present? Sorry, guys.
I got caught up on the valet. You asked a little over there, I don't know if you...
I did.
Yeah, I did. They didn't tell us when the valet was. It switched on.
I know, that was waiting.
I was like, "I'm administrating." Sorry. I just texted you. Okay, then the agenda is approved as published. This is now the time and place for members of the public to comment on any item not on the agenda.
I'll hold back if you didn't quote on the agenda.
I just thought I did, period. I didn't get away with it.
You said "poised."
I guess my imperial process didn't work. Is our motion approved, the agenda?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, OJ. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you. Getting participation here. Did you like that? I thought you'd appreciate it. See, I knew you'd appreciate that. That's pretty good. I punched you this morning. I got a good night of rest.
He's choking over here.
I got a good night of rest.
I used to end something.
No, I... All right, okay. The agenda is approved as published. Okay, this is the time and place for members of the public to comment, for real, on any item not on the agenda at any one of our locations. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on an item not on the agenda here or at any of our sites?
Anybody online, Liz?
Anyone?
I don't see any online, and there were no emails or text messages submitted to the governing board email or the number we provided on the meeting, so I think we don't have any.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Then we'll move on to reports to the board, starting with North Bay update. The North Bay team, have a good... Oh, yeah, all right. There he is.
Liz, did you get the presentation?
I did. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get it up on the correct screen. I have two screens going right now.
There we go.
I can do that.
Travis is all yours. Good dude up here. Let's do it.
Can you all see that, okay?
Yeah. That's perfect.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
We've been off to a running start here at Pivot North Bay. We have a lot of exciting changes that have come for Block 1 in the 2024-2025 school year that I'm really happy to share with you. All right, so during Welcome Week, we had a super high student attendance rate. We had about 154 students onsite here between high school, middle school, and elementary.
So exciting in the parking lot.
Exactly. That was an issue we had to figure out there with the pickup situation. But in the four years that I've been working here, that is the highest amount of students that we've had physically here onsite. So it was a challenge, but, you know, hey, we were happy to see that kids were still eager to attend the site program here. A few changes that we had to make to that, in order to accommodate the students that were physically trying to come to the site, we had to move to a lottery program on our high school side, just to accommodate the sheer amount of students that were trying to get them through the door. And those core group of students that we were able to pick out have been super engaged. They're super invested in coming in here, getting the help that they need. We've been focusing on a lot of peer connection and relationship building during the first block here, and it's been going great. Like I said, the core group of kids that we have coming consistently to the site, they love being here. They're making friends and they're learning new skills every single day. We've also jumped right into our community service. So here's a photo of a community service opportunity that our high school students attended last week at Doran Beach. They got an opportunity to clean up their local environment and just have fun in the sun.
It's a lot of kids, though, right there.
Yeah. It's a good group. Our elementary program is actually growing as well. On any given day, we could have about five to 10 students coming in. Our instructor, Ms. Sarah Torma, is doing a great job at structuring this program, giving kids opportunities to do art projects and connect with their peers, as well as taking part in social emotional learning. Our middle school program is doing just the same here. For Block 1, they're focusing on art, music, and dance. We have three different ECs right now who are heading the middle school program. We have Arianna Vincent, we have Isabel Beckner, and then Jessica Holt is a new EC to join us this year, who is a professional dancer who came in to share her love of dancing with students. This is them on a bowling field trip that just recently went on last week.
I didn't even know that.
All right, and our high school program has jumped right into their onsite courses and clubs. Here is the crochet club that's led by Ms. Megan Coffey. This is a club geared towards community service. So our students are knitting these eight-by-eight squares, which are then going to be sent into a program called Chemo Crochet, where they're going to take those squares, combine them down, and then donate blankets to cancer patients.
Wow.
Very popular class. Every time you walk by, it's just so sad. All these kids are just so goddamn... So quiet.
That's such an old-school thing to do, except for the kids.
Exactly.
Yeah, more and more. Ms. Courtney Bird is running a science lab club. This is a really awesome club that's gained a lot of interest from our students. This gives them a chance to actually put into practice what they're learning in some of their classes physically onsite here. So they have an opportunity to take the labs that are ingrained within their curriculum and put them to life. So they actually get their hands physically on these experiments. They've been focusing mainly on the water cycle and fossil formation. As you can see, Charles very proudly holding up a tooth there. It's a really, really close-knit group of kids here, though. They've been working with microscopes and examining specimens that they've been able to collect either at their home environment or here around the school, and then making observations with those. But again, it's really cool to have the kids connect with the labs that are, hey, maybe inside the curriculum that physically get to do, but they get to do it here onsite. Our next club here is run by another new EC, Ms. Demi Perez. For the last two years, we've had students begging for a Dungeons and Dragons club, but we just haven't had an EC who's been able to run it. But Demi has had years of experience in her personal life and running it at a previous school. So for this eight-week block, students have been focusing on character design, creating backstories. So there's a lot of math and writing components ingrained with this club here. It's been super popular. The kids have really been into it.
That's awesome.
It's amazing that it's still going. I did that when I was...
All right. What is Dungeons and Dragons?
It's kind of like a...
I'm asking for people who don't know.
Oh, I see.
I'm helping them.
It's a role play. You're a wizard, fighter.
Travis, nobody's talking about. Shut up.
So it's a very in-depth...
Can I... I'm asking the appropriate person here. What is Dungeons and Dragons?
So it's a very in-depth board game. It's very customizable. Students have a lot of freedom when it comes to designing their characters and the environment that they navigate around. So they get really invested into this. Thank you, Travis.
Yeah.
I never thought about that.
Your ego is getting involved.
And you use your imagination.
And there's a person...
Travis, why can't you have like this coming out?
Because I'm trying to teach you what the students are actually doing.
No, I'm talking to Travis.
But if you don't care about the students, will Travis continue?
So our next course here is actually one that I've taught for the past two years. It's our Intro to Art class. This allows students to actually get a hands-on approach to some of the artistic stuff that they might previously be interested in. We take all levels here, very beginning to intermediate. My whole thing is, I want to take where you're at, and I want to make sure that you can see some progress throughout that eight-week block. So we've been focusing a lot on charcoal and graphite and the basic elements and principles of art. We've done a lot of still lifes, and then we moved on to portraits in the latter portion of the class. So this class was actually worth five visual and performing arts credits as well.
A lot of kids in his class, he took this two years ago.
Two years.
Two years ago. Thirty-five kids. He had to move it from the high school side to over here. Thirty-five kids, and he took it to a paint drop. They were just like...
Oh, look at that one drawing right there. That's amazing.
I know. I mean, it was amazing.
Cool.
PE Club is ran by Mr. Andrew Campbell. We, fortunately for us here, have a park that's right down the street that accommodates a lot of different games that we can do. So students have been partaking in basketball, soccer, volleyball, and football. And then those students, when they come back to site, they're actually able to take that physical activity that's fitted to the park and then generate that into their PE logs, which, again, counts towards credit. And we also have a new club run by Ms. Nicole Benjamin, an art history class. So this was a course that actually existed within our curriculum. Ms. Nicole picked this out, totally revamped it, and customized it to fit an onsite format platform. It's going to be centered around some really cool field trips that we're excited about. So just next week, they're actually going to be taking a field trip to Legion of Honor in SF, and they're going to be able to examine some of these works of art that they've been looking at within this class. And then the big culminating event, which is still in the works right now, is a trip to New York City. They go and visit some museums up there. Very excited about that.
Our first, while we have the Prop 28 monies, that we can help to supplement this particular art history museum-focused trip, Liz has been working very diligently with staff. Kareem's been involved, a nurse has been involved, the two teachers that are organizing it, Travis has been involved, I've been involved. They're actually going through EF, which is a student travel company. So a lot of logistics are taken care of, but if this is a first, we're doing it... The kids will be doing fundraising. They'll have their own fundraising webpage.
They should have a little skin-in-the-game.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
You should ask board members to buy things.
Yeah, good. Thank you, Jim. Nice leading.
You what?
They should ask board members to buy things.
So...
I might go to this.
How many... When is this trip?
It should be scheduled for May. We don't know when.
This May?
You let us know.
I think it's the end of May that they have to wait for flights and to kind of... So far out.
How much?
Eight hundred per seat, somewhere in there?
Somewhere in there.
One eight hundred?
Each?
That's not bad.
That's true.
Per week.
For a week in your work?
Yeah.
A week?
Okay.
Plus the flight? You may have some board members going. We'll help sure the...
There's thirteen... Somebody just asked how many students. There's thirteen students eligible because they're in the class. And so Nicole and Arianna are looking at the students to see which ones want to go. And like you said, for the list, you know, we want to make sure that they have a commitment to this, that they're not going to back out last night. They have some skin in the game. They do some fundraising. They put in some of their own money, things like that. And so Nicole and Arianna, Kareem and Abigail, everybody's been working on it, trying to support them getting this done, doing it strategically.
Let's make sure it happens. Oh, yeah, that sounds amazing. So the kid... Be clear about that.
Yes. Yes, sir.
The Halverson Foundation man write the whole program. Oh, he didn't give me half his tune until he collects from that one.
Yeah.
So the students, so you're in the club, which is easy to show up, right? And then to be eligible for this, you have to, what, have been to some of the club meetings, write a paper? There should be something. It's a really cool thing.
This is a more structured class, actually. So this is chock full of assignments and tests. So it's an actual curriculum.
Schools are really loaded.
Yeah, and there's going to be two blocks associated with this class. So there's an A version, a B version. The A version covered, you know, art history in general, so cave paintings of the 20th century. And then the secondary version is going to focus much more on New York amateur.
Very nice. Yeah, it's cool. And, you know, like when Gracie did her fundraising for her job, there's a whole website that people can go to to donate to individual students.
All right, and this is the last one. Finally, we have our construction trades class, which is led by Mr. John Alderman. This is the second year he's done this course right now. And it teaches kids how to use various tools, power tools, hand tools, how to do, you know, various DIY projects. They've learned how to repair a P-trap for a kitchen sink.
Wow.
And their final project...
When did the classes held?
Yeah.
I'll be right over.
It's super fun. Their final project is actually constructing like a mini end table out of two-by-fours that they get to sand, paint, and totally finish.
Are we still partnered with the Linn Foundation, Liz?
This year, I don't believe you.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
So this is one of those classes where, I told this before, Janet, we should get a union involved. You know, one of the laborers' unions. They probably help pay for it and everything, so the students have a connection to their plumbing union, electrician union, you know.
Their apprenticeship.
Yeah, 100%. I mean, and they'll be paid for the materials, and then our students graduate, and they're on their way to a great new career.
That's a great idea. The electricians' union is literally a...
I know, I drove by, I saw it. They would love to take our students and get them on a path and pay for all this stuff. We should...
Yeah.
They'd have all the time.
Great idea.
Anna will help you with that.
Okay.
She's taking notes.
Awesome. Next slide, Liz. So here's a sneak peek at some of the Block 2 courses that we're going to be offering here. We've got a marine science class that's going to be going on during Block 2. This is going to be worth five elective science credits. We have everybody's favorite class and everybody's favorite person here on campus. Ms. Anna Tosso's Plant and Soil Science Class.
Yeah, 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 I saw it.
That's always a really popular one. That's a two-part class. It's also worth five CTE credits per block there. We also have our robotics class that's making a resurgence during Block 2. We have a community service class that's going to focus on community service opportunities locally within the community and virtually as well. We have Mr. John Alderman's music performance class making its annual return. And then finally, we have a board game club that's going to focus on socialization and kind of peer connection a little bit over there, too. And then just to give you a guise of some of the upcoming field trips that we're really excited about. This top one's a new one here. We're going to be making a visit to KZFR radio station, which is, I mean, literally just a hop over the freeway right here. The kids are going to be able to tour the radio station and then be on the air as well.
And that connection through Mr. Travis, his connections there for the radio station.
What type of format is it?
Format?
What, the music or talk show or whatever?
They host a litany of radio stations out of there. So they have the country station, K-Frog. They have a jazz station. They have like a Top 100 station.
Great.
So, I mean, it's every genre.
That's great.
We're actually going to Jack Lemmon State Park as well. We're doing our annual Snoopy's Ice Arena trip here in November, December. Like I said, the art history course is doing their Legion of Honor trip, and then we're also working on the Alcatraz trip as well. I believe that's it.
Wow.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Any questions for Travis?
Questions?
Well, I just, I know a lot of this is very complicated, doing all this stuff. I mean, it is involved. When you put that much time into it, creating these things, and hope that it works, it's outside of the regular curriculum-type stuff, and that's difficult. It takes time and effort. And to be that articulate about it as well, amazing. So that's really great. Great.
I just want to be a student again. That's what happened.
Yeah.
Exactly. Well, it seems like the students are really, you know, picking up and joining these clubs and classes. And that, of course, is the bottom line.
Absolutely. We're no longer having to drag them in.
That's great.
It's interesting because we continue ahead, which I'm thrilled about to a point. Because our DNA will always be what we are, right? The type of school we are, the students we... But we're moving towards traditional school things, which I like because our format for a long time didn't tend to that as much. But that doesn't mean our students shouldn't have those things, the problems, the field trips, and the clubs. So I love that faculty's getting on it and doing it. I know that's extra stuff, so thank you. That's really neat. That's really... That's what makes high school special.
Yeah, all the teachers need to be commended, too. Their creativity, their innovation, their dedication to doing cool stuff.
Tremendous. All right, well, good job. Thank you. Yeah.
Really, really neat.
Okay, we'll move on to the fund committee. Liz.
All right, yeah, we get the financial update. Can you all hear me okay through the...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so for today's financial update, if you can believe it, it's been, you know, how many months now? Five months? Four months since we last had an official update? So I'm sure you're all chomping at the bit to find out what's going on with the budget. So we'll just do a quick recap of the 2324 fiscal year financials. The unaudited actuals reports are on the agenda for ratification later today. Those were submitted in September as usual. And so we'll just do kind of a final presentation on that. And then an update to this year's budget. We actually had not, we haven't met since the official state budget was adopted and all the trailer bills, you know, kind of gone through all of those details. So we'll do a little bit of a recap on things that the state budget impacted in Rhodes Education budget. And just an update for this year in general with attendance and enrollment, things like that as well. So for the 2324 fiscal year, which ended on June 30th, our final forecast, we did have some changes here that made the operating income increase a bit to the end of the year, including some revenues and things like that getting shifted around. As you know, we are navigating the tapering off of all of those one-time revenue sources that had multi-year spending timelines. So there were lots of, you know, conversations had with Jana and myself and Ed Tech and our auditors sometimes, you know, just about making sure that we're using those revenues appropriately and wisely and planning that kind of, you know, tapering off appropriately. So some of the changes in the UAR are related to those kind of tweaks with the spending plans for tapering off of those one-time, multi-year fund sources. Overall, a healthy position. And as the unaudited actuals are on the agenda for ratification today, I wanted to make sure we showed each site's numbers. And I apologize, this is a little bit small. But each site, you know, is... These are the numbers that are in the reports for ratification later. We did have two sites with positive operating incomes and two sites with slightly negative operating incomes. And overall, it was a roughly break-even year at the home office with a little bit of... We try not to have operating income at the home office, but sometimes we end up with it just due to ways that the Pivot Riverside year-end close works in Galaxy. And so we can't actually calculate the home office revenues and expenses until after the Galaxy books are closed, so sometimes it ends up being off by a little bit. But overall, the operating incomes are looking good when compared with the ending fund balances and things like that. All sites had a very, were in a viable position.
What's the total increase in the fund balance?
So these, by site, the last...
Total for the, for Rhodes?
Total for Rhodes was a positive 766K.
Hey, great time to buy an espresso machine for the staff.
Maybe one for every employee in the board. So the net, because I got it, was that North Bay and Riverside had a positive and the other two did not?
Correct, yes. North Valley was slightly negative. San Diego was a little bit more negative. And again, some of those changes were resulting from adjustments to those multi-year spending plans for the one-time funding sources, because those revenues, the plans for, you know, which year certain amounts of revenues are allocated in, is, it's a bit of a moving target. So there were some adjustments at the end of the year that are partially contributing to those slightly negative operating incomes. However, the fund balances for all the sites are still positive and strong, especially North Bay, since they're our biggest site. And we've been, you know, in a sense, you know, kind of planning for a big change in facilities or upgrade to facilities. I know that was something we talked about in June, that, you know, if we need to move or not, or spend some more time and investments upgrading the current facilities, that is a discussion that I know Jana is working, you know, with our authorizer and everything regarding our renewal and where our facility is located. So I believe you all had, you know, discussed a committee or, you know, an ad hoc committee to work on facilities, questions if, once we get to that point. But that is one of the reasons for the North Bay funding, fund balance being what it is, is we know we need to do some facilities things, some capital projects soon, and just not 100% sure about what that's going to be. North Valley, San Diego, and Riverside all having, you know, strong ending fund balances as well. So despite the slightly negative operating incomes for North Valley and San Diego, fund balances are still strong.
What's the percentage of the fund balance on S.O.?
These little orange kind of diamond things are in the percentages, so...
For Rhodes as a group? Was it around 45?
Good question. I don't think I actually have that percentage in front of me. It's somewhere in the range of like 35, I think. But that's just in, by looking at kind of averaging these here, I would have to look that up so I can get back to you on that.
I believe Dr. Halverson has done the calculation.
They don't know how to... Now he's appropriately set up the...
Now, I would not want to question Liz, but that would be inappropriate. But I will, anyway. No. Anyway, it's up from what it was, and it's still relatively a high number for it that way.
Which is a wonderful thing to have.
Well, we discussed in January how to strategically use this, and it keeps going. The board is saying we need to strategically use it. So we need to have another January where we talk about it a year later.
Well, yes. It's not cash, though.
It's just 4.5 million in cash.
Yes.
Yes, so I can provide an update on that as far as the investment options. So we have been waiting patiently for the local agency investment fund to approve us. However, they did not have a board meeting for many months. So their board meeting, the first one they've had since we discussed this, actually, is in November. It's on November 13th, so it's coming up soon. And we are on the agenda for approval to join the local agency investment fund so that we can invest some of the cash in an account that will actually have some returns on it instead of sitting in a non-interest-bearing account. And then I know there were also some questions about, you know, using some of these, you know, using the fund balance to invest in capital projects at North Bay. But there were some balls in the air and questions as to what would be appropriate and when. And I know we're working on some things with our authorizer in Santa Rosa and Sonoma County that kind of, we need to have some final answers there before we can make a decision.
Well, I think that's where we're queuing ourselves up for, especially in Riverside, where we're growing, we're strong, we have a solid relationship with the school board there. Should we buy some... Our school's getting too small already. That landlord, I don't remember, so...
They're in here. I mean, we literally...
Well, we have to, when we sort out the charter question for good here, we should look at investing in something and not paying for it. That's why I think we should start, and we want either here or in Riverside, where we know we're going to be.
I think by the time strategic planning comes around in January, we will have all the answers we need. And even we can bring to the table some real estate options and have a good discussion.
On the agenda, I think you're all probably thinking similar.
Yeah.
There he is.
See, right? We should be kind of considering investing that money into something real.
Potential.
Yeah. I mean, we promised the charters.
Well, once we...
That should be resolved.
But Riverside, we're good.
Yeah. Are we good here, though?
Well, that's what we're going to work. We will know that, I think, by January. But yes, if we...
When we are... Real estate's a long-term play. It seems, it seems like the authorizing bodies aren't on a long-term orient. So that, I don't know, I'm a little on the fence about purchasing real estate, but I get the need for it.
Yeah. I'm not going to buy anything.
Well, you guys have been talking about it.
I don't know. I'm kind of thinking about it.
Well, we will put it on the agenda for our strategic planning session. And we'll meet...
That is one vote. That is... You're very aggressive today, Mr. Halverson. Oh, I know.
I will be with you all individually prior to the strategic planning board meeting to discuss what you would like to discuss at the strategic plan. So it might be a hot one.
All right. We'll have that discussion at 6 o'clock in the afternoon, maybe.
I'm always right, though.
Next slide, Liz.
All right. One thing I do want to point out is that we are just barely coming to the end of depreciation for our most recent Riverside capital outlay project for the current facility. So, you know, in general, ideally, since that was a really big one, you know... So, you know, in general, ideally, since that was a really big one, you know, we want to make sure that we finish that out before starting something new, but that it were, the timing is, is potentially right for that. The depreciation is almost complete.
And just a little side note there, not to royally rub around this again, but one of the other issues is we are tending to find our very strong Pivot line employees. Anna and Erica, who's in special ed, and a new potential, some other positions that we have that have been replaced, you know, that people have left, people are replacing. And we've run out of space at Pivot Riverside to house those. We have, we are potentially considering making a speech and language pathologist offer, rather than paying way too much money for the companies that are doing speech and language, and we finally found one, and she's out of Riverside. So, so there is, it's not so much the, the kids' space at Pivot Riverside, although that is a separate cap out. It's, it's staffing space. And no staff wants to work for a school, would be like alone in some random like office space. So we're, we're kind of trying to work on that. We, like, as you know, we built, and maybe don't, and actually, yeah, I did update my ED report, we built new offices at Pivot Riverside. Dr. Halverson saw them, we, we put, we took away Bill's space and cut it in half and built all the spaces that Anna and Erica share right now. Anyway, so we were running out of space like that.
Yeah.
So.
All right, so if we're ready to move on to the current year forecast-
Thank you.
We'll talk about some updates there. So I will kind of preface this slide with a caveat that at the time this was made, we only had one month of attendance data. So it's not a whole lot to go on. However, we did make some adjustments at North Bay and North Valley just because of the numbers that came in in the first month of attendance data. So we did notice the last year, we had really high attendance rates at North Bay and North Valley, like abnormally high. I'm not sure what the, the secret sauce was there last year, but this year we are kind of back down to more traditionally, you know, attendance rates that we have seen in the past. And then based on, you know, staffing challenges and things like that, having some of our new hires subsequently not continue and things like that. So we've had a little bit of staffing challenges, and so we haven't had the enrollment quite as high as we had originally budgeted for. And then again, as often happens, it's partially due to, to staffing. And then, you know, just making sure that we're not overwhelming our new teachers as they learn the job, so they start off with like a partial caseload, and then increase up to a full caseload over the first, you know, few months of, of learning the job at Pivot. So we did make some small adjustments overall at North Bay and North Valley. It decreased our ADA forecast by 24.5. Again, however, this is only based on one month of attendance data, and we have 10 attendance months in the school year, eight of them drive our primary funding numbers. So we'll have a much better idea of, you know, what our ADA for the year will be, like in December, and present that to you at the January meeting. So this is, you know, just based on one month of attendance data, so it's very likely to change in the coming months. So the, any questions about that? Overall, we, we dropped the attendance percentages a little bit at North Bay and North Valley from 82 at North Bay down to 80, and from 88 at North Valley down to 80, which are historically numbers that we have seen. And then we did decrease the North Bay enrollment slightly, and that's largely based on staffing challenges there.
That's a low number, 80%, right? That's our historic?
It is not a number that we tend to want to shoot for. We're being a little bit conservative here with the 80%. The first month's attendance at these schools was more like 85, 86, 87. But the first month is generally kind of a honeymoon period where we see our highest attendance rates. So in general, those rates do go down, and so we're kind of, as I said, just from one month of attendance data, it's hard to make changes. So we, we just kind of went with a conservative, you know, drop down to 80, which was kind of a historic average, a little bit on the low side. So I'm hoping we'll be able to bump these up if we see attendance percentages, you know, kind of rebound or, or maintain, you know, kind of the month one numbers. Generally, we see attendance rates go down after one, month one. So we'll just kind of have to see how those pan out. And if they sustain the same percentages, we can definitely bump them back up a little bit.
Abigail ran LP2 already, do you remember offhand? I could pull them up, but.
I, I did also, and it, it's, it didn't change my, my forecast estimates. I'll just say that as kind of a summary.
Because I want, one, it's good to be conservatively budgeting, it's not good to overly conservatively budget, so, in my opinion. And two, 80% should not be an attendance goal.
No.
I mean, to be very clear, that was not my expectation. So if, if we're doing that, I don't think that's my colleague's expectation either. So if we're budgeting that because it's conservative, that's one thing, it's a lot overly conservative, and I would hope we have a 90% goal or something, which I-
It is 90.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
Yes, yes. The actual goal for students and staff is not the same as the budget. We go a little extra conservative on the budget, but the, the goal, and with the state of California as well, any student who is absent more than 10% of days, having an attendance rate of less than 90% is considered chronically absent. So we always strive for 90% plus. However, the numbers that we actually see average, you know, aggregate over all students is generally somewhere in the 80s, with the exception of Pivot San Diego, which has maintained a very strong, you know, kind of 93-ish percent attendance rate for the past many years. So kudos to them for that.
Yes.
So with the forecast, the, the decrease in the ADA, again, some of it is attendance rates, but some of it is also actual enrollment numbers based on some, some staffing challenges that we've had at the start of the year, which we could not let in as many students from the waitlist at North Bay. So the, the decrease in revenue here is the, the primary driver of the change in operating income. However, we're still showing a positive operating income of 114,000. There were also some end-of-year things that were changed after the unaudited actuals were completed. We couldn't do these in advance because we, we kind of needed final numbers. The Prop 28 Arts and Music in Schools funds have a three-year spending timeline. We do want to get to the point where we're spending every year's funds in that year. However, last year was the first year, and the CDE didn't issue their kind of guidelines and frequently asked questions and all of the information until halfway through the year. So we didn't spend all of those funds. It was just a bit of, too much of a scramble to get new arts programs in place in the middle of the year. So we do have about $100,000 worth of Prop 28 arts money from last year that has been carried over to this year because we were not able to spend it last year on that kind of short timeline. All right. So overall, the updated forecast, how it impacts the sites. As you would expect, North Bay and North Valley went down a little bit because of those enrollment and attendance forecast changes. San Diego and Riverside went up a little bit. A lot of these changes also are impacted by those things like the Prop 28 funds, where suddenly you have more revenue that was originally booked in the prior fiscal year, now being recognized in the current fiscal year. So certain things like that are what's driving this upward swing for San Diego and Riverside, and kind of mitigating the effects of the decreased ADA forecast in the NorCal sites. So overall, still positive operating income, down slightly from, or down about, more than half, but still healthy from the original budget. Okay, so cash balance, as you brought up a minute ago, we do have a very strong cash balance at the moment. A lot of that is due to timing of revenue receipts and things like that, and, you know, the fact that we had a lot of influx of, of money during COVID that we have been slowly spending, but some of it is still coming in. So we had kind of a, you know, a big influx in the beginning, and then a lot of, the things are kind of, the last payments are based on a reimbursement. We have to show what our expenses were, and then those monies come in. And a lot of these funds are in already interest-bearing accounts, such as our Pivot San Diego treasury account, our Pivot Riverside treasury account, and the rest of it that is currently in Bank of America is more than we would want it to be, which I, I'm hopeful that the local agency investment funds board will approve Rhodes Education to participate, and then we can start transferring some of that cash that's currently sitting in the non-interest bearing Bank of America account into the local agency investment fund to get some kind of returns on that.
Let me just comment, this is probably the most boring slide, but it's so exciting to see.
I know.
I'm, I'm reflecting on a number of years ago, with the wild fluctuations, when many times the dotted line was below the zero mark.
And make sure it come low.
And so I want to commend Liz on your boring slide.
No, you're right, I would think, we used to have those Vs, remember?
Yeah.
We had the loans and the-
It gave me anxiety, I can't imagine what Liz was thinking in the background.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I 100% agree with you, the boring slide that makes me feel so much better and sleep better at night is definitely, that is this slide.
Yeah, on my notes on my page here was, I wrote, no wild swings this year?
Yeah, that's great. 100%.
Yeah, we, I think we've, we've kind of hit a really good stride as well with just kind of workflows and best practices for, for getting the revenues out of various other places that they start. So, you know, when there's revenues in the San Diego treasury account, in Riverside's treasury account, and in North Bay's county treasury account as well, there are different mechanisms for transferring cash out of there into our Bank of America account, which is our primary operating account, where we, you know, pay the majority of our, you know, payroll expenses out of there, and things like that. So just from an operational standpoint, things have gotten much smoother over the past few years, as we've developed some really good workflows with our counties and authorizers, you know, and kind of making sure those, those things are, are consistently managed well.
It's like taking 14 years. And that's not on Liz's part, that's just on the part of our county treasury, is to getting used to charters.
Okay, so just on the summary slide here, covered the two first accomplishments bullet points, but I did just want to point out the last one is that the Pivot San Diego charter renewal was submitted. EdTech attended as well the, the public hearing in October, as I was out of the office and could not attend. So thank you to, to Eric for being there. He said he really enjoyed seeing the presentation, and it's great to be, you know, to have EdTech be our kind of clutch supporter in that sense. And the vote for the Pivot Charter, Pivot San Diego charter renewal is coming up in December, and I will be there for that. And the petition budget, I think, looks, you know, very, very good, and I'm hoping that, you know, San Marcos Unified will, will see that our school is stable and, and going strong despite being small. Next steps-
They showed them a better picture, Liz. It was phenomenal. I mean, we've all talked about it, but we were so strong in our presentation, and it was nice to see Eric there. Tom and I both got to say hello to him. I did really notice that he was there, appreciated that, and he ended up having to do anything per se, but they are a partner, so it was really good to have him there, and we acknowledge that. So I'm glad you did too.
Thank you.
Liz, San Marcos Fiscal Department hasn't reached out to you with any questions yet, have they?
No.
Okay.
No questions yet. So next steps, obviously there, you know, we, we need to fine tune the ADA projections as more data comes in. As I said, only one month of attendance data is not a whole lot to go on for making updates to the forecast, but we do have the first interim coming up, and that is based on financials through October 31st, which just passed. And we will have at two and probably three months of attendance data by the time we finalize those numbers. So we should have a better, you know, kind of update on the enrollment and ADA projections for the first interim. We also, one thing I, I want to point out with the forecast is we did make adjustments to enrollment and ADA based on the first month of attendance data, but we still have quite a few updates to make regarding compensation and benefits and staffing on the expense side. On the forecast update today, there, we updated largely the revenue side, but haven't had the, all of the expense updates incorporated yet. So in January, as I mentioned, we'll have a much better kind of picture and updated forecast that includes all of the changes with staffing and things like that that are still currently happening. We're still, you know, hiring for positions that opened up, you know, that were vacated and things like that. So there's a lot of changes on the expense side that still need to be incorporated into the forecast for the January meeting. As I mentioned, the local agency investment fund has their board meeting on November 13th, so I plan to participate in that and make sure that if they have any questions, they are answered, and explain why we are eligible or should be eligible to participate. And we also have funding determinations coming up. For North Valley and San Diego, they're due on February 1st, and they will, the, the judgment or the, you know, sort of the verdict, the act of the State Board of Education on those funding determination requests will take effect for the next fiscal year, starting July 1, 2025. And then on the horizon, obviously, state budget, you know, there's, it's, it's been a little bit of a question mark and, and some, you know, nervousness with, you know, some forecasts and the economic outlook. So we'll obviously continue to monitor that. And also Prop 32, which we should hopefully have some news on that soon, since Election Day is coming up, but that is the proposition to increase the minimum wage in California to $18 an hour, and that does have some implications for our expense forecast, not so much on the actual minimum wage side, but how it affects the exempt salary threshold for staffing.
Oh, I have a question?
Yes.
On the investment organization you want us to join, what's the basic return per year on a, you know, an annual basis? I mean, it's a guess, but.
They have a chart, I, I don't recall it, I'd have to look it up, but it, it's, it's moderate, you know, it's, it's similar to-
I think it's around two and a quarter.
Liz, do you agree with him?
That sounds reasonable, it, it fluctuates-
I don't have $30 million invested in it, Tom, I have no idea.
I asked on Liz.
Yeah, they, they have a table that shows the, the return rates, you know, kind of every, every year, you know, you know, in periodically, like every quarter. And I want to say the highest one I saw was maybe 6%, and the lowest was, you know, less than 1%, but it fluctuates, you know, probably on average around 2% to 3%.
Thank you.
Okay, that is the last slide. Any questions?
Want to have the report?
Yeah, a boring report, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz, very good.
Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
By the way, just as a dovetailing off of that, you know, we have leadership team meetings every Monday, and we do have on the agenda attendance. You know, as Liz said, last year, we had a big bump in the first, first learning period, so we call it attendance period. So we're just, you know, we like to brainstorm, what do you think happened? Sometimes you don't know, it's a crapshoot, but we're gonna, it is on our agenda on Monday to talk about. And also LP2, or attendance period two, went down a little bit as well, just overall, so.
And we did, we did actually already discuss what happened in last Monday's agenda too, and there were some good points brought up, you know, as about why do we think it was so high last year, and why is it a little lower this year? And we talked a little bit about the updates to independent study attendance claiming rules and things like that that come out, they've come out in the trailer bills over the last two years. There have been some updates every year regarding kind of rules for claiming attendance in independent study programs. And so I think we have some good input on kind of why things are different and what we can do to ensure those numbers kind of make a rebound.
Yeah, I was not on that meeting last Monday, so Monika wants to chime in a little bit, which is why it's on the agenda again on Monday, just let me on that. So it was a good conversation, from what I, I've heard, but we need to take it a little further. So it's not, not, it's not being ignored, board members. All right, thank you, Liz. Could you just pull up the ED reports?
Yeah, I wasn't sure which one you wanted first, just the regular ED report?
Yeah, I only put links to the others in case you didn't want to- Yeah, I only put links to the others in case you didn't want to just look at it on the small screen. So it's just a repeat of what is already in my report if you want to link from the board docs to those other documents. Hey, go ahead. All right, a couple of things we're going to talk about is enrollment, staffing, the renewal, and the discussion of organizational management. And that is our wonderful entire team, including Dr. Halverson and Mr. Lewis, heading out in our t-shirts prior to the Pivot Charter School San Marcos San Diego Public Hearing. So we'll talk a little bit about that too. Enrollment is going strong. This was actually, these numbers are a week or so old and it continues to go up, as I mentioned. One of the things that Liz and the team started doing last year is setting two different targets for fall because as you know, average daily attendance is an average of the entire year. And so our enrollment has to have some kind of strategic targets throughout the school year in order to get to the average daily attendance that we are looking for. So there's really nothing changing a whole lot here. I think the high school numbers are a little bit higher at North Bay than they were in the past percentage wise, just overall percentage split between elementary, middle, and high, but no big deal there really, to be honest. So we need 13 more students. We have about, they changed the laws, governing board, about who we can put on our waitlist there, and we have to allow parents to just submit an interest form and that just says, hey, I might be interested. And we have to put those people on our waitlist even if they have not filled out a complete enrollment form. So they could just be tire kicking. So when you hear numbers from me, when I give you updates on a, you know, bi-weekly basis and about our waitlist numbers, and it might be 120 or whatever here at North Bay, it's because we are required by law to put those tire kickers onto the waitlist. They may, they may have just been like sitting out at 3:00 in the morning, just, you know, Googling stuff and fill out a form, right? So we've, Abigail works very, very closely with Shannon and the enrollment teams on figuring out how many students we have to offer, pull from the waitlist in order to get X amount of numbers of the students to actually enroll and accept the waitlist position. So it's kind of funky. That just changed last year, so we're just getting used to it and we are just getting a year's worth of historical data to know what those numbers need to be, but it too is a crapshoot sometimes. So we might pull 60 students off the waitlist and only get four students accepting positions. Or we can't risk pulling 60 off the waitlist and maybe getting 50 of them because we might not have enough staff for that. So it's a game. It's a shell game. So anyway, so when you hear my, when you see my numbers about waitlists and everything and you hear 100 or, you know, 200 on the enrollment waitlist, that means nothing, to be honest, except that we have a lot of really good interest in the school. So it's a good thing.
Should we not be having the waitlist and then having subcategories?
We can't have subcategories.
You can't just track it?
Oh, that we do. No, we do. We track how many accepted. We track from what period of time they accepted, but we have to put them all on the same waitlist.
Yeah, but that's in the education code or something like that?
Yes. Yes.
Superb.
It is. It is. It is. So it's just one of those fun games of things that change that we have to react to. What we've done to mitigate it, we kind of got smarter, we're having multiple waitlists. And so we open and close one for like two to three weeks and that's one waitlist and we pull off of that. And then once we've pulled everybody and they haven't responded, we can go to waitlist number two. And as the school year goes on, those people on waitlist number two and three, based on the time that they are tire kicking, are becoming more seriously interested in, as opposed to us having to go back to July 1 when people were just, you know, Googling it all the night, right? So we do have multiple sort of waitlist to allow for what Ralph was asking about. So it makes it very confusing and not so fun. So currently we have waitlist, and sometimes it's very temporary. So when we have new teachers, we don't just throw 28 kids at them. We need to strategically add students to their caseload. So sometimes a waitlist is temporary while a new teacher, you know, you don't want to give them nine new students coming in. North Valley had this big spurt last week or two weeks ago. And so we went to a temporary waitlist there as well so that we could just temporarily allow people to catch their breath and catch up. So North Valley, Riverside, and North Bay technically right now have waitlists, but we will be pulling them off of the North Valley waitlist. I think we're, are we through the waitlist at North Valley? No, not quite. Yeah, not quite. So it's a good problem to have. So, North Valley, look.
I know. Wow. I know.
It's amazing. It's amazing. And typically North Valley's historical enrollment is they're a little slow to start and then all of a sudden they get a ton in January. That's just been North Valley's trend. And we've been saying over and over, year after year, we've got to do something different because, you know, the kids in January, it's hard. It's hard on them. It's hard on their academics. It's hard on our ADA. And so yay, yay, North Valley. Very, very excited. Yay, Joel, thank you. So yeah, pretty, pretty cool. And it's continuing to happen. It's not like it's slowing down there either, so it's pretty exciting.
We don't have any space issues there yet.
No, not with the number of students that are actually attending the site-based program, but they are, and they are also with a little, from me, revamping how they're using the spaces a little bit better. So we have ample space there right now. They would love to have a staff bathroom, but that's on their big wish list and we can't do it because of the codes.
It walks out of the executive office.
Yeah, no, we can't do it because of the codes and because of money.
Block away or something?
Yes, they have to walk around.
Walks to headquarters.
Yeah, that would not be fun in the rain. Anyway, San Diego's enrollment, you know, they are not too far from what the target was and it's going up. It's up over last year, not excessively, but it is and that's, that's great. Love to see it. As, you know, Tom, you were there at the site, Jim, you were at the site. It's looking very good. They've done some, they're doing some changes there also.
I think we sized correctly, which is good.
Yes, yes. And as you remember, last year we gave up the extra elementary room that was around the corner and we consolidated it. So we gave up a little expense there last year, but they've done a great job. And then Riverside. Wow, wow, wow.
We knew that this is nothing. We're going to be, we watch a couple more years twice that. There's so much capacity there.
There is.
So much being.
There is. And we love our authorizer there. They work very, very closely with us. When Brandon can't be our rep at certain things, Craig is. If I can't be, we kind of share, you know, working with RCOE on different projects. So it's great.
So I can see when's your full number for Riverside population?
I'm sorry, I left you.
I couldn't read it.
Go back, Liz, to Riverside real quickly.
What was the total enrollment?
Total enrollment rank, as of last week was 177.
So we're about a half an EC higher than that now.
Yeah.
Which is unweeded because?
Yeah.
I didn't hear that one.
What is that, maybe we need to win it?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, we do have a half an EC. That's the next slide though.
That's why you're running on that deal down there.
Transition.
So staffing, we had a couple resignations since the start of the school year, one education specialist and special ed, one educational coordinator and one counselor. Leaves and absences that are coming up. We have four.
Babies in pivot.
Three that currently leaves. And she has said, I can publicly say this, Danika is the first. She's, hers starts on Tuesday. I had not gotten permission on the other two to share that publicly, but Danika was fine with it. So we, you know, again, that's kind of a shell game and Brittany works very, very closely with all of them on using their state, federal leaves, our leaves, how to combine them to maximize their baby care time. Brittany meets with them individually. I'm there as much as I can. We have certain little deals that we can make through the end of the school year to give them some more time with their babies and maximizing, but, you know, we have to have coverage and we have to plan ahead and know what the coverage is going to be when they're going to be out. So, you know, it's fun. It's great. So we did actually replace the counselor. We have a brand new, well, two brand new counselors actually. As of, when I wrote this, we didn't have the second one start. So we have two brand new counselors here at North Bay, full-time. One that we just needed from last year and one to replace the one that just left at the beginning of this school year. And we're very, very excited. Brianna just started, two weeks ago? Yeah, two weeks ago. So two brand new counselors here. And it's great to have Travis, I don't know if you want to speak to their involvement, the counselors' involvement here at North Bay when the kids are on site?
Yeah, so our new counselor, Brianna, has instituted a new item to our student check-in forms. So when students come on site here, they're required to sign into the computer, which essentially counts like their attendance for being on site. And they've added a social emotional aspect to it. So the student has to designate how they're feeling when they enter campus on a specific day. And it's been instrumental. I mean, we're able to identify students who are maybe coming in with some of these negative feelings that we wouldn't have known prior, right? These kids are wearing a smile every day. We don't really know what's going on unless they reach out and let us know. And this is a very informal way for them to say, hey, you know, I'm not really feeling 100% today. And it allows us to, an opportunity to go and check in with them. Very incognito, we're not causing attention to it, but we're letting them know, hey, we know where you're at right now and is there anything that we can do to help out? And it's been great.
Yeah, I just learned about it yesterday. I think it's so cool. And when kids are having little meltdowns, it's really nice. We did not have a counselor physically here for two years? Two years? Yeah, since Angela come up, right?
Yeah, we had part-time.
Yeah, part-time a little bit last year. So physically having a counselor here and having two, this is the first time in many years that's full-time. So we're very excited to have both of them here. So we also just, I just sent the email this morning, made the offer yesterday. We did hire an aide and she has accepted the position here at North Bay. So one of those four aide positions is hopefully filled. She hasn't gone through the process yet, but hopefully that will happen. So we still have one education specialist, special ed teacher that we are looking to hire because of the one who left at the beginning of the year, and at least one educational coordinator. Travis and Abigail and Craig and others have been conducting those interviews fast and furiously. So, and as I mentioned earlier, it's not up here because it's not a position that we have had in our budget because we've always hired out to a company for speech and language services, but we are still actively seeking a speech and language pathologist so that we can be our employee instead of us hiring out. So that's kind of where we are at with staffing. Any questions on that? There we are in the audience, our whole team wearing our bright blue t-shirts that I made sure we ordered, every campus got them, but this is why you want to have a sea of color that the board members and staff at any of our school districts can see to measure the level of support for the charter, because that's literally what the education code says, a public hearing is for a charter renewal. So we met at the site for pizza and to get Pivot t-shirts. We had about what, 20, 35 people there?
Yeah.
30 people at the school site and then a bunch of others met us over at the, over at the board meeting at the district office. Gail and I, and then by default, the educational coordinators and teachers were fast and furiously reaching out to families. Rachel was helping me send out reminder notices to the families every two or three days to show up and so it was fun.
I want to point out though that, that is, and this is the audience at the board meeting. This isn't cutting off much of the rest of the group. This is, this is it. So we dominated it by about almost three fourths of people there. Had blue shirts on, because that, the front row is the front row right there.
Yeah.
So that, I mean, it just shows you how significant it was to be at that meeting. It was huge.
Yeah, it was fun. It was very heartwarming. And as Dr. Halverson has been sharing and comments, and so has Mr. Lewis with others, you know, we did put out emails saying, please speak. Ms. Gaskell will help you if you want help to know that some of the, you know, things that you should and maybe not say, because I say, please don't bash your former school. That's not fair. And they do, the parents want to get up there, oh, and they suck. So, so I, you know, I kind of just coached them, but other than that, like, you know, suggestions on what not to say and directions to go, we did not script this and yet.
Amazing.
It couldn't have been.
Unbelievable.
It was amazing.
Asking people who do not speak in front of the audience to do so. And one lady, we mentioned the last lady was only in Spanish and there are three members of the board for San Marcos who do speak Spanish, so they didn't ask, they didn't need a translation of any sort. To have her do that and to stand there and do, make a presentation, that to walk up there and then in front of a podium, that's a big deal. I don't care who the heck you are, even me, when I have to do it, I go, oh my God. So for them to do that and then randomly they're picked to speak, I mean, it was an astounding thing to see. And it was very emotional.
Yeah.
The graduates who had current teachers, parents, so it was just amazing to watch.
Yeah, I sent out over 800 emails to prior students. All of our, we went back to the databases, to the Excel spreadsheet and sent out emails to all of them. A lot of them were dead emails, but to the families and students from Pivot San Diego and two alumni showed up. So, I mean, Craig got up there, he talked about how his children graduated San Marcos Unified School District schools and how successful they are.
That was a great start.
Yeah.
It was a great tribute you gave to the school district. Yeah, it was tremendous.
It was a mic drop. And then he was, he actually signed up last, but they hadn't go up first. Like again, we couldn't have scripted it.
He's completely confident the school district had given it was for his kids. That's what it was.
But that Pivot serves a need that his kids didn't meet, right? They didn't need to take advantage of because they had San Marcos Unified for them. So anyway, it was wonderful.
So will you let us know what the staff recommendation is as soon as you know it?
Yes.
Because I don't, how, how many of us do you want there on the 12th? If we have staff recommendations?
Depends on the staff recommendation.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'll fly down if we have an adverse.
We won't have a staff recommendation.
Probably the week before.
Probably the week.
Yeah, yeah. I think if we haven't, based on what the board, I think we're looking really good.
Yeah.
For some reason you have a funny, put an alert out to the board and I'll fly down and.
Please pull in my calendar for Thursday, November 14th. For.
Originally it was going to be.
Okay.
Yes, they changed it and I sent out an email to you all, but yes.
Or the vote, it was a vote back. That's right. That was a vote, Steve.
That was going to be, but they moved it out. So, so yes, I will let you know. I will keep you posted. So, but we're going to do, we're going to do the same all call. I mean, it would be wonderful to have the families there, so.
I just wanted to remember, everybody remind everybody, how much work it took to get this to happen like this. It is, because I'm going, well, I was really great, they all show up and then Jane's run explaining to me how various people worked to get calling and sending things and getting them and I'm going, oh yeah, it's happening. Anything, right? More than one person's a huge deal, pulling this off and making it look like this and having sincerity of the whole thing. It wasn't astounding to see, but it was a lot of work behind the scenes that you and the staff did to pull it off. So that's, that was impressive.
It is a lot of work and Gail did a great job and I keep reminding our other site administrators that theirs is just around the corner. So.
Well, this was textbook. So Gail needs to instruct the others on what she did and how, because it was excellent.
I have kind of a playbook there.
Really? I didn't know that. Oh, so Steve, this, there was a couple alums spoke, I mentioned this last night a little bit, but we should talk more. Incredible alumni, these two spoke and the one lady almost died. She was going to be a doctor and she's at UCSD. All right, she's trans, phenomenal.
Yeah, yeah. She's much more articulate than anything I've ever done. I'll tell you, she was incredibly articulate. So, all right. So a little program overview here. I'm trying to give you the short version and it's a very complicated sort of situation, but in special education, there historically was a placement called special day class. And in a traditional school district, that would mean that the student spends more of their time in a self-contained classroom, because their needs are higher, because their academic ability is much lower, per the psychoeducational evaluation that looks at IQ in broken down into many, many, many subcategories. Generally speaking, it runs in around the 70 percentile level that qualifies a student for special-day classes. Our SOPA has recently said to us, oh, everybody's moving away from that terminology. I'm like, whatever, dude. I just know that I have these kids, right? Couple of years ago, we looked at using a specific curriculum outside of our general ed curriculum, because it's about access, right? If a student doesn't have the intellectual capacity to necessarily access our curriculum, our regular curriculum, because they can't understand it as easily, and this is not just because it's independent study, but independent study makes it even more difficult, then we felt several years ago that we should have an alternate curriculum. And that was when Tracy was Director of Special Education. So, what we did last year, and I did tell you guys this last year, but it's year two, God bless us. We hired another charter school that I've known for years. She's been around as long as I have, so we're kind of dinosaurs. And they are, they have 40,000 students. It's unbelievable, something, some, God, huge number. Anyway, they implemented a special-day class program, and we have, we've contracted with them to deliver it to our students. So, we have many more this year than even last year, and last year was many, many more than the prior year. And so, the partnership, so you can see the numbers, and these numbers are higher now, it's more than 13 at this point. So, they qualify under special education as what they call moderate to severe. So, we have a wonderful new education specialist, Kylie, who is dedicated, her entire, her entire full-time equivalency at this point is working with our special-day class students. And we're looking towards the future. I'm planting the seed on bringing it a little bit more in-house, and now that we have so many of these students, so. And using the curriculum that we had intended to use several years ago, and so we are working on that for the future. So, just letting you know, we've had some programmatic changes this year, and that's probably the most significant one that I can think of that has been a little time-consuming.
Is there a different ADA rate?
No. Nope.
Yep.
And later on the agenda, you will see a request for you to consider what the state has implemented new as of last year in alternate diploma requirements.
Isn't there some special red money beyond the normal?
There is special ed money for just all special ed students.
Right. I know that.
That compared to the overall cost of special ed.
Right.
They used to call it incorishment.
Federal money as well.
Yes.
I know they're all minor.
Yes, very tiny. We do get, so we do get additional monies to serve special ed students, but it doesn't cover the cost of the programs.
No, it never has.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think I was at, the one in Riverside, was it Kylie, was it?
Kylie, yeah.
She's very good, and I talked earlier on about something else. But she had a kid there, probably senior, but they're working, he could barely speak. I mean, it was very odd. We also think people are all normal, and you don't see the unusual kids that are out there, or adults for that matter. And we don't always realize that, but she was working with this guy, using like Lego-type things to work with him to reinforce him. It kind of reminded you of the spectrum of people that are out there that we would help, hopefully to make a difference in their lives, in their parents' lives. And she's working with him and having the patience and the dedication to say, oh, look what he did, kind of thing. I remember, we had a presentation for, when I was working, it was autistic teacher, and she came in the video we had, and it showed him, he was severe cases.
Yeah.
And we're looking at something, a kid did something I didn't even see him do it. And she said, look, look, he just turned it and did, oh, that was so cool. She was so dedicated to seeing the difference and being dedicated to making a difference in his life, that it was really fun to watch and be appreciating it, what they do and what parents also deal with. So, these are, the goal is to make a difference in somebody's life, and these guys do that.
Yeah, it is pretty, it is amazing. We have several, we have two students, Pivot Wide, that have Down Syndrome and autism, and they too are nonverbal, for the most part, not completely, but, and just learning how to spell their name, even though they're 16, 17, 15 years old. And the cool thing, and you just said it, Dr. Halverson, but any progress for those students in their learning is just huge, you know, compared to a student that goes from basic math to algebra, right? It's just huge, so. So, it's pretty amazing, so, we're excited about it. We're providing a program for them that they deserve now, at that level. We're excited about that, proud of that. Okay. Organizational management, this is one of the attachments I also put in the board docs to be a larger version. You all had asked, this is the updated organizational chart with photos, look at that. Thank you, Rachel. And, and then additionally, at the last board meeting in June, Dr. Halverson said, could you please give us a brief summary of each one of their job descriptions so that you all would have a better understanding as we grow with all these new positions, including Anna's and some of the others, as to what these different individuals do? And so, there's a link on the next slide in case you wanted the link, but if you want a link there, otherwise, I also added the document.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. Somebody keeps talking about somebody, and I go, now, wait a minute now, where were they last year?
Yeah.
And then what it's likely, very helpful, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. I forget, because I know everybody, and I know what they do, and I forget that I'm not necessarily bringing you all along.
I tell you, assume I know nothing.
Yes.
And any here would agree with that, and just hoping that so.
So, curriculum coordinator, systems and technology, I mean, you knew the basics, Brittany, Liz, me, Kareen, Abigail, Craig, but our ELD teacher, Jasmine, so a lot of these were brand, not brand-new positions, but promotions last year when we did the revamp and the reorganizational chart, so. Anyway, so there you go. Any questions about the staffing?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Nope, but then I'm going to get. It was very helpful. Yes, very.
Good. Keep that in your back pocket for when we.
Have to memorize it, or?
No, I think I might add it every time, to be honest. It helps me too.
It's a good idea. Thank you, Jana. Excellent. Okay, great, great news, great stuff. Okay, our next report is from our community liaison. We're excited to hear from you and meet you and everything.
Oh, let's don't make a big deal, honey. We've had conversations, she wants me to buy her up.
No, 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 you promised. You promised. Why would I start off by thanking you all for giving me the opportunity to be here, not just today, but in Pivot? So, yes, I am the community liaison, and to provide a brief job description, my main responsibilities are to make sure that Pivot is a valuable asset in our community. We're partnering with colleges, getting internships, student outreach, and working with Trekepe Smith in our marketing department. I also provide outreach to our foster and homeless families and students, and I coordinate special events and activities that serve our Pivot staff, students, and families and the community at large. This is a random, random little girl 29 years ago on Halloween. As you can see, I've always been very shy. I have a master's in educational counseling with my people personnel services credential, and I worked as a counselor for four years before I came to Pivot, but I've been in education for, this is my 11th year now. So, I worked as an administrative secretary for seven years prior to that. My goal has always been to give back to communities who are underserved, and so throughout my time in education, I've learned that charter schools is where I need to be, because traditional schools, they get a lot of additional help, and I found that at my previous counseling positions, I really felt that the need was with foster, homeless, probationary, and parenting youth. And so, I wanted to make sure I gave back to, I'm very passionate about what I do, and I wanted to put that passion towards students that might not get that support. So, I'll start off with North Bay. North Bay was my first event. We had a Chick-fil-A fundraiser here on August 29th, and then they requested some support with the Santa Rosa Violence Prevention, so we set up a workshop on October 4th for the staff during a Friday that they all came in. North Valley, we had Mayor Andrew Coligian, Senator Brian Dolly's representative visit, and it went really well. Jana did amazingly. And then we had our trunk-or-treat event on October 27th that Trekepe Smith found, and they worked directly with me, that I worked with our staff to make sure that we have the staffing and the activities or for that one specifically candy for students to stop by at the event and pick that up. Riverside, right over here, is Mayor Tom Richens with Brandon M. Bill, and then we had Assembly Member Sabrina Cervantes' representative visit as well.
There is not a mayor at any of our district that has not stepped foot under Pivot's canvas.
Now we're all. This is, now we're all.
I'd like to add that the mayor from Santa Rosa, one of her, he has actually been to Pivot as well.
I was gonna say that, Sabrina. I was gonna share that.
That's right. Now we're good, way to go.
Also, for Riverside, this is Mr. Gus Munoz, and he and his students, they knit beanies, and it's for premature babies. And they did it, he had reached out to hospitals and wasn't having much blood, so I reached out to Kaiser in Riverside, and we were able to donate 100 beanies to the neonatal intensive care unit, where we found out, not to put a damper on it, but.
Really?
Yeah. We found out that these beanies don't actually go to unborn babies, they go to babies that don't make it home, so that the families can take that with them as the, yeah, as something special.
And there's over 100 of them that we donate.
Yeah, and they'll need more next year.
Yeah. So, in Gus's class, you know, we were talking about the crocheting here, and this is a knitting class. I mean, you all know that he's been doing this for a couple of years, but he ran out of hospitals that were accepting them, and so that's how Anna found Kaiser and found this.
Is that Gus?
That's Gus, very. Yeah. That's him on the end of the pivot trip.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, thank you for finding that. We ran out of places for them to go, so.
So, in San Diego, we had Once Upon a Book Fair on October 12th, where it was about, I want to say 200 to 300 kids and adults all coming through and checking out all the different books. We had a booth set up, and they got to spin the wheel, we gave out a ton of information. Even people who were running tables came by and asked us for information and flyers. I was able to introduce the two guest speakers, and then afterwards, people who were sitting in the audience were interrupting the guest speaker, can I have information about Pivot? So, it was really great. And then we got to be in the San Diego Union Tribune, so, yeah.
So, a lot of the time, some, it's about 50/50 at this point, but Trekepe Smith finds these events, and in the past, I just didn't have time to scramble it together to get staff to attend them. So, Anna has been doing that, and then there's other times where Anna's finding the events, because she's talking to staff, and she's going, okay, Trekepe Smith, you need X, Y, Z, and I'm gonna put it together, and so we did, we did one here too, that was in the beginning of the school year, we did the films, the, oh, yes, it would be like here.
This one, actually, I found this one and then worked with the staff, and then the next day, October 13th, there was Harvest Fest with Trekepe Smith found, and then I worked with the staff to make sure we had staffing for that.
As zoomed in on the wheel, I see new car and weekend and truckie on there. That's a good wheel.
Each one of our sites does have a wheel. It makes noise, so it brings the kids over, and then we have prizes when they spin the wheel, so it brings them to the table.
We also had Deputy Mayor Sharon Jenkins' visit, right over there with Gail, and that same exact day, we had our Wellness Fair. So, it was really great, because Family Health Centers of San Diego was able to come out, 417 Recovery, which is, they work specifically with students who need help in mental health, who, testing for special education, behavioral issues, so they came out as well, were able to give information. Love on the leash, and we had yoga and sound baths, that was actually provided by a parent from San Diego. Coming up for Pivot, North Bay just had Mayor Natalie Rogers' visit, which, who had a student that came here. Thank you, Travis.
It was like year two, three, four, that he was here, the mayor. So, yeah, it was cool.
We have our Wellness Fair here in North Bay coming up next week, so for that, I have Pause's Loving Support coming out, Positive Images LGBTQ Community Center, CHOP's Team Club, and a few others. And we also have a Bite of Reality in partnership with Redwood Credit Union, they're working with Travis. And in Riverside, we have a Bite of Reality in partnership with Schools First.
Can you explain that? It's kind of cool.
Yes, and San Diego also has a Bite of Reality in partnership with California Coast Credit Union. So, what a Bite of Reality is, I like to call it monopoly in real life, so the students will walk in, they'll be given a card, and they'll tell them, you're married with three kids, or you're single, you're a single mom, and then they have to stop by every table, which will be run by staff, and the staff has to upsell them. So, they stop by the first table, and they want to buy a Ferrari, and the staff has to tell them, yes, get the Ferrari, and then the house, like, they can get a two-bedroom house, or they can get a mansion, and the staff has to try to sell them the mansion. So, at the final stop, when they get to the credit union, the credit union tells them, no, now you are homeless, and you have no money. So, that's their job, and so, so each, each site is working directly with a credit union that I put them in touch with to partner for that event.
I said my doctor. What is that? Schools First is, is a teacher, well, apparently a teacher's credit, Orange County's credit, it's an amazing organization, if you somehow get cooked in with them. Even currently, they, the district I was at, they still pay for their retirement dinner that they hold for the district. They pay a substantial part of it.
Wow.
And I remember way back when, their director would come to these local schools in Orange County and come and make a visit. They really are in the schools, I mean, big time. I mean, that's, that's their thing, and they're, the bigger ones, the state now. But if, just annoying them, that's a big deal. And so, I would think it was a good way to get at them and see what they could help with, they could do, especially for a smaller organization.
They really want to work with us.
They could do amazing things, and they're willing to put up the resources to help it, because they have that ability. And part of it, I just, I've been with them for a long time on stuff, but what they did is so many years ago, and the guy who started it, one of the directors of the whole thing, they handled multi-millions of dollars, billions in some cases, but they somehow, a deposit wasn't made appropriately, some massive amount of money, and so some things didn't happen right away, within a day off, something like that. And the director, the guy, executive director of this organization, sent a letter, everybody, no matter how much money you had in the place, 50 bucks, millions, everybody got a $50 credit, because he said, we're apologizing, we messed up, and we're sorry, and we want you to know that we're, our staff needs to realize that that happens.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna tell you as our clients and so forth, that we're sorry for what we did. And I thought, talking about making a positive out of a negative, and who would've known if you got 100 bucks, you wouldn't know what that is talking about. But that's the kind of place it is, it's very human in that way, but it wants to make a difference, even though it's massive in some cases. So, I would hook up with them in some fashion, there's potential there, big time. And if you need anybody to come by, I could tell them I'm one of their oldest members, and I am, I bought my first car, I threw this, so.
They just brought me cupcakes recently.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, they brought me cupcakes.
That's what I'm saying, that's kind of who they are.
They want it.
And they want, yeah, so if you, you know, like, wow, the cupcakes are really great, and you take, take in it, and that's an organization you can work off of quite easily.
Are they statewide or only down there?
They're statewide now, I think, but they used to be just Orange County, and they expanded out, I couldn't pay up beyond that, I don't know, but they used to be Orange County Teachers Credit Union, then it became Orange County's federal teacher credit union, then it became Schools First, that made out of 10 years ago or something.
Well, the beauty of what you're seeing here, what you're seeing is, I never had time to follow up on this stuff in the past. There's just no way, I've got a job to do. And now, we have this woman who is now at this position, and is not only finding these things, but has the time to build those partnerships.
The other part about, you talked about even that trip to New York, they might, as a kind of organization, would like to make contributions to stuff financially, to things, you know, maybe just in the region you're talking about, like Riverside or wherever they are. I don't, I don't know if the state or not, I don't, I don't know that part. But if they are, and they might be up here for a while now. Like I said, from what I know about them, and I'm obviously selling stock here, it's like, they're quite the organization.
Well, thank you.
There's also the LA, California Credit Union.
California Coast.
It's LA, LA City Schools have a credit union, which actually I've been wanting to determine, but actually. They, maybe they'll find out their name and see. They would, they're the same, they're the same kind of organization. Coast part doesn't, doesn't fit me right now, but maybe that's who they are. They changed from LA City Schools Credit Union to something else. But anyway, those, anyway, anyway, the one I know about, the one I may know about, the other one.
Well, California Coast Credit Union only serves like San Diego County and Riverside now.
Okay, that's probably not them, that's LA. Although they did buy the Navy Credit Union or something like that. In San Diego.
Great.
So, anyway.
It's awesome. Thank you. I'm just looking it up.
So Pivot WAG now, In-N-Out has donated gift cards, which will be used according to the donation policy. I also have moved with translating all of our social media information to Spanish as well, which hadn't been done before. I've sent out foster homeless surveys for purchases for any additional resources or support that our foster homeless students need. I am now reaching out for internships. We're working with my lovely executive director for authorized relations. Assisting with target renewal and working to get more partnerships within our communities. I also want to add, I usually have really huge ideas and then I'll meet with some of the staff and be like, I need you to bring me that down. Can we make this happen? And it's usually a yes. Like it's, yeah, of course we can make it happen. Let's just think of the logistical. So that's been great for me.
One of the names to propose the other day, that, again, it's just ideas, right? Is to do the kind of fundraiser that some of our foundations do at other school sites with, you know, donations from businesses and people can make bids and they walk away with, you know, a free gift at a very low cost, like a manicure, pedicure, whatever. So, so we're starting to, you know, for the spring. So. But the partnerships, she's working very, very closely with the counselors to build, you know, they, they created this amazing resources manuals for each one of our sites and families. For when, you know, our counselors only do academic counseling. They're not there to necessarily treat mental health issues. That's not their job, their role, or anything else. So, but many of our students need that and the parents don't know where to go and they don't know what the insurance covers. So anyway, they have a resource manual, but that's where their job stops. They can't like, but Anna's now starting to reach out to all of those resources and build those partnerships with like 471 Recovery and some of the others where they actually get to know us. And we're going to create MOUs to work more closely with them. So the families have direct access, not just here's a link to this webpage. So, and in return, they know who we are and round and round we go, so.
And it's been really great too, I think, coming from a counseling background because the counselors will reach out to me and say, hey, I found this resource. And I'm like, hey, I'm already in contact with them. So that's been really good too.
She's finding things that we've never thought of.
Well, Anna, you're exactly what we need, like 10 years ago. I'm thrilled that you reported to Jana, that you're, you're close enough to the administrative staff. We can fill you up with 80, 90 hours of work. So we, we need to make sure we're prioritizing your efforts because you're touching on all the things we need to do. I would suggest that you interview each of us. So you know what our resources are and our network to help support you. And I think that just on the whole, where you are, where you're doing great stuff. I think we've been kind of grappling with, can we get some foundation dollars? Can we have a foundation? We better tie into some of our alumni and use them to reach to our communities. Those are huge work efforts that we just haven't had staff to do. I don't know, that may not be your job. Jana tells you what your job is. But I'm still very interested in those areas. We have an item on our agenda about a foundation perhaps and different checking accounts. We can start raising money. You'll be the perfect person to help steer some of that and advise us on that, so. Where do you, do you live in this area?
No, I, I live in Riverside County.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, that's great.
One of the offices we built, she shares with.
Well, I think it's great. I think it's good having you at these meetings too. So it works out that you can come to these, so we can see you and hear from you. You're a great spot. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw some of you last night, but I ran away because I wasn't PJs.
Any other comments from board members?
I'm just going to say that the ideas that we've heard today are the types of ideas that are totally fundable. And it's just, you know, it's harder to raise money for the amorphous, hey, give the pivot. It's wonderful. I mean, I hope people do. Because unrestricted is better than restricted. But when you have ideas like we've heard today, you can, it triggers in my mind, oh, maybe Jim will be good for this one. Or I can ask Joan to help with that. And when it comes to the New York trip, I don't know if they're still involved. There's a family that I know well who were really high up in the New York Public Library CFO. I think she was the CFO and he was doing something, I don't know what. But like, that's an amazing institution. And one that if the kids could go there while they're in New York.
We'd have to.
I'll see if they're still involved and I can see if they'll remember who I am. It's been a while.
That'd be awesome. Reach out directly with me.
Yeah, but then as Jim said, please reach out to me. My Rolodex is getting a little stale, but do we even know what a Rolodex is anymore? My LinkedIn is.
Business card file.
It's getting a little shaky. But I still have a pretty good network. It's my old job, so.
Thank you.
I'm really happy to help.
He does know, I hate to say it, he does know a lot of people and a lot of stuff. He's not real bright, but he knows a lot of people. Well, I got a fly, are you angry or something?
I want to just comment, you know, this is outstanding work that you've been doing. And I think it's really important because, you know, it's one thing for us to show up at meetings with parents. That's really important. But having supporters beyond the school and the school family in terms of people within the community, organizations, other elected officials. It's, those kinds of supporters are also really important. And when we are in need of really having more impact, calling them in because we have someone who's a direct connection to them, to come and support what we do, who are third parties, but yet recognize the value of what we're doing, is incredibly important. And so all of these different connections that you've been cultivating on are tremendous.
Thank you.
And, you know, I myself, whatever I can do to help support, I'm really glad to do that because I, I think we all recognize the value of having that broader support community.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It was, and I noticed that with Mayor Tom Richens. He mentioned when he came to visit Riverside that he eats breakfast right across. And he's like, and I saw this building and I saw it being built, but I just never stopped by. And then he walked through and he was asking all the right questions and we had all the right answers. And he was like, you guys are doing amazing, amazing. He said, you, you guys are great. And I would love to, you know, he said he would post us on his Facebook and to send him our pictures. And so it's great.
We've, we've done press releases, well, they're not going to be picked up, but we've done press releases on all their visits. We quote them. And then I forwarded you that Senator Dolly put it in his newsletter to his constituents that he was at Pivot. So.
It's all what we have to be doing. You know, hopefully, you're talking to your colleagues at other schools. We need to be getting to Democratic members. Dolly, you know, you can show up or not show up. I'm glad you did that, but, you know, he's a Republican. So, because people need to understand site-based independent study. They, they don't. The organization, they keep poking at us. And they don't, they do not understand the kids we're serving. We're serving the kids they care about. I know it. But, so these kind of things, as we start getting elected officials through and seeing what we're doing, has huge ripples.
Yeah, and that's why the local elects, the mayors and other council members, even the city managers. It's important that they are connected because they will be advocates at the legislature. So we don't have to rely on a single, you know, senator or assembly member, but they will be advocates for us. And, and when they have a better understanding of the program and what we're doing and the impact that it's making, they're going to be really important to us.
So keep your community relations up. That's super. I mean, get in the Chamber of Commerce, every month you should be, I mean, the Chamber of Commerce CEO, the city manager, the police chief.
She presented at the Chamber of Commerce.
Good. You know, the public works director, because I guarantee they're trying to hire maintenance workers and wastewater workers, and those are our students. They're great jobs. I mean, and so just keep that up. That's, almost like a calendar, every month you have these people coming through a school. Now that we have you to organize that. Well, also provides opportunities that you may like, like sort of public works, that they may offer a job in service for kids who are high school students and say, oh, oh, yeah, we like that. And we have a thing where we help out in that area. And then it's like for here, they could say, okay, well, you can go over there and see how they do that. Oh, well, we can do a class or bring them in here and talk about it. I mean, the opportunities will rise geometrically.
Oh, yeah, there's plenty of opportunities.
Yeah, and they'll want to do it.
For summer kinds of jobs or, you know, park rec.
Right, right.
You know, as well as public works.
So I think it works a lot of ways for them too, to, what can they get out of it? And that's, that's a bit, your network gets bigger as you know. And you maintain contact with them as well. That's a huge, they'll say, I heard about something, but nothing to do with me. But I heard about something over there you might want to, let me call them for you. See, I always call the, pardon the expression, but the SC family, Georgia family, if you want something, they, they know somebody, they will call for you. And I, and it, but it works. I've seen it work many times. You get, you create the same family environment in the city or the community you're in. It's kind of fun, actually. It takes some time. It's fun to see it once it starts working. Ralph's daughter Alexis works for Santa Rosa County Parks, or Sonoma County Parks, pardon me. And knows all kinds of people. She's wonderful. It's, that's why I asked you to talk to each of the board members. Because we, we'll overwhelm you with work. You seem like you're wanting to be overwhelmed with work. I can tell. He's on drugs, I'm sure. I may hire her away from you. So you better be careful.
I'm not looking to attack anyone. But I just have to share like this one story with the, the book fair in San Diego. It used to be in, I think, Escondido and they moved it to San Marcos. And that was a big deal for them. They have hundreds of people that show up and they were hoping San Marcos was going to get the same traction. We, we essentially paid to market for the part of our marketing budget. But we got on the bags, the tote bags. And because of the level that we came in at, we were invited to introduce their keynotes. And there were two keynotes. And you know me, I was getting all excited about it because I'm really shy about public speaking, right? And it turned out to be the day of my good friend's memorial. And so I couldn't go. And, because I didn't need to choose that. It was a Saturday. And I had just started to get to know Anna, you know, when this all kind of came up. And I said, do you want, are you comfortable doing that? And when I asked her like right before it happened, I said, on a scale of 1 to 5, 5 being you're terrified, you know, how nervous are you to speak in front of hundreds of people, introduce these people you don't know? And she said.
She said zero.
She said negative.
I didn't say any, you're.
The fact that I was a good trust, I know, I usually do a good job. I, you know, I was able to go to my friend's memorial and I knew she was going to rock it.
To be fair, I was like, I don't know anyone. So it's very different than presenting the people you know, or Dr. Halberstien, you know?
She didn't even explain it at the board meeting. Wow. I'm very glad you're on the team. That, Anna, I already liked you, now I revere you back. Hey, I'm trying to get your Holly Davidson. Okay, I was going to buy it for you. Well, hey, that was, thank you. That was a great round of staff reports. Congratulations to our staff. You guys are doing great. Thank you Liz, thank you Greg, everybody. Gosh, everything's, everything's great. It's so great. Janie, can you take a couple of months off? You probably could. You've got a great team. Congratulations.
I feel very, very, very fortunate. When I had kind of hit a wall, you know, a couple of weeks ago. And I was like, I need to take a little break, but I need to keep working. I was able to get out of dodge because it's just running so well. So, yes, I do appreciate that very much. Very proud of everything.
Okay, move on to action item 4.1. This is the nomination election of board members. Dr. Halberstien and I were the nominating committee. We interviewed hundreds of people, far and wide. And at the end of the day, I think we offended them all. And so we are stuck with Ralph Holmes on being.
Can we extend the shirt?
Get Anna back out here. Because we can't have this shirt.
No, honestly.
I didn't say that. I just said.
We, we, no, we did discuss it and we would be honored, Ralph, to continue to serve. Your background in finance and your work on the Budget Committee and your connections to the communities we serve are really.
Add a token to it.
That's it. And a UCLM. So you, you, you serve well. Your attendance is great. You're involved. And so we'd love to nominate you. He's a nice guy to the board. So Ralph has accepted the nomination. So it is for the board to affirm Mr. Holmes for another four-year term. And that's my report. Any questions? Any members of the public that would like to speak on item 4.1?
I think you have an add-on to this for the next.
I do. But, yeah, any members of the public who wish to speak? The character of Ralph J. Holmes? What's that? Well, you guys, you guys sweated me.
A character comment?
You guys sweated me. I'm just getting you back from what you did to me the last minute. Okay, hearing no member of the public pushing to speak, a motion is in order.
A great. Committee will speak. It's a great pleasure for me to nominate.
I thought the committee already spoke.
We did.
It's a great pleasure that I nominate.
Ralph Holmes, he is a great guy and it's a pleasure having him here. Director Martel has the floor.
Yes.
You got to get a second.
She's moving approval. We, we're the committee. We put them on.
No, but I nominate. Greg, Greg told me I could do this.
Chair recognizes Pat Martel.
I would like to move approval of the nomination of Board Member Holmes. Having worked with him closely on Budget Committee, I can attest to his commitment, his insightful feedback to staff about all things financial related to Pivot. He has, in a few minor instances, also enlightened me on financial issues that I was not aware of. And so based on that, and his very, very steadfast commitment to attending board meetings and supporting wherever he's needed, I would like to move approval of his nomination.
Thank you. Is this second by OJ?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the character of Ralph J. Holmes? All those of you who are going to say aye, aye?
No, that you put it.
You were working hard to lose the nomination.
Were you there last night? You see, there lies a lie.
I vote aye. Martel, aye, okay. Who opposed? I heard two ayes, no opposed.
No, that was an aye. You didn't hear me, but.
I think I'll, did you vote for yourself?
I do vote for myself.
Okay, that's always good to know. Okay, then, Mr. Holmes, you're re-elected to the board. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I just want to say that I really support what the organization does. I think, you know, what Pivot does is very usual and inspiring. And it's great to be part of it. I appreciate the opportunity to serve with these board members. It's inside me. They're all incredible people in their own ways.
He voted for you. You can swipe that one now.
It's an honor.
Perfect. Well, thank you. We, congratulations. I'm glad you, I'm glad you continue to serve. You each give up your time. This is not, you know, light work, so I appreciate. I know you love people, pack them to be on board, so I appreciate it. To that end, your service will continue because we next get to go through the grinder with Board Member Martel and Halberstien. Their terms are up in January. And so, Mr. Holmes, you're going to join me on the nominating committee for that.
Is this like a city manager, you can resign instead of being fired?
Well, I was talking about myself. I was talking about Dr. Halberstien.
Well, he's on the, oh. We'll talk about that afterwards.
I didn't hear him.
So Mr. Holmes and I will be the nominating committee for nominations. So we'll be discussing with both of you before the board meeting in January. So that will, that process will continue.
Liz, we good on that?
Yep, all good and on my side.
Okay. She's taking a nap.
She's taking notes.
All right, well, thank you. We went on to 4.2, alternate diploma requirements.
Yes, so as I mentioned earlier, the California Department of Education and its legislature has required local education agencies to create an alternate diploma. These are the general, I don't want to get too much into the weeds on it, but here are the general requirements. The student must be eligible to take the California Alternate Assessment, which is the alternate standardized tests. And they are required to complete standard-aligned coursework to meet the state requirements. But the diploma requirements can look different to me. So we have a rather general alternate diploma suggestions for you. Once we begin looking into alternate curriculum, we may revise this. But I wanted, you know, it needs to be on the books that we do have the alternate diploma. We do have students already pursuing it. This is new this year. And once we start using an alternate curriculum possibly. And once we start using an alternate curriculum possibly, it may change what we call things, what we call a class, what we call the courses, but we can generally fit everything into what we have right now, and the path that those students are pursuing fits into this alternate diploma. Any questions on that? So many of our special, not, not all students who qualify for special day class programs have to, not all students have to pursue this diploma, but it is an option specifically to the majority of those students, because they take the alternate assessments. But we do have some students who are in a special day class program that are pursuing a traditional diploma at Pivot as well. So it's not like an all or nothing thing. It's not, we're not pigeon, we're not pigeon home kids into specific diplomas. Many times, if they're in the special day class curriculum, they probably, in most cases, they can't pursue going to a UC school or Cal State school, because those organizations have very, very, very specific courses the student must take, but they can still get into a Brazilian colleges. They don't have to go to CSU. They can certainly go to junior colleges. Many, some of our special day class students in the past have taken different, you know, done different grommet. So, so we're not pigeon home kids, but we do need an option for some students. Make sense?
Any member, board member discussion, questions? You're asking us to approve the alternate diploma requirements. Any members of the public wish to speak on item 4.1? I'm sorry, Ralph.
I do have a question.
Pardon me.
How many students do you think would fall into this category?
About five or six.
So it's not more.
Might be a little more, but.
Sorry.
No, no.
No, that's great.
It might be. Abigail, what is your number, if I just asked you off the cuff, that would be pursuing the alternate diploma? Not all the SBC kids, you know, the point I was making, but. One, one potentially helpful number is state audits that students who qualify for the California Alternate Assessment, less than 1% of your student volume. So that's probably similar to this. So maybe one to two a year? Yeah. Again, it's not all kids that take the alternate assessment, but they have to, in order to qualify for this, they have to qualify for the alternate assessment. So it's different subsets.
Is there a benefit to having both?
To having both diplomas?
Yeah.
Well, I know one is required now, but, but yes, it is, because it's not always, we're setting the kids up for failure by having certain expectations for diploma requirements. If they have disabilities such that they cannot meet those, I want them all to have a California High School diploma, as do the legislators in the California Department of Education. So this gives them an alternate option that makes it doable for them. Yeah, absolutely. So they can be successful and feel successful, and have a goal that's, that's realistic for them. Yes.
Great. Okay, are any members of the public who wish to speak on item 4.2? Okay, and Liz, I'll trust it. You'll speak up if somebody's online. If I don't hear from you, I was assuming nobody is. Okay, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the alternate diploma requirements.
Move.
OJ, thank you. Seconded by Mr. Halverson, Dr. Halverson, pardon me. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, approved. Thank you, Ms. Gaskell. All right, the next item was spurred on by Director Holmes and I, and this is a authorization to open a new checking account for student donations. Board Member Holmes was very generous, had an opportunity through work to donate to the school, of a matching gift that he did, so thank you for that. But, and I also wanted to contribute, but it caused a conversation of making sure that if we're raising funds as board members through our contacts and from our own resources, that there be a pot, I mean, Steve, as you said, unrestricted, right? That it's not mingled with the government money or the A&E money or things, so we have this strategic pot to do things with. And those may be activities that state monies can't necessarily use for. So we talked about it. There wasn't an opportunity to do that. So I did ask Ms. Gaskell to work with Ms. Jones to see about opportunities or options for setting up a different account under Rhodes Education Organization that would not be mingled with the public monies we receive. So, Ms. Jones, I'll turn this over to you. I appreciate you looking into this. Do you want to share what your thoughts were?
Absolutely. I know previously, there had been some discussion about establishing a foundation for fundraising and, and certain activities, and it was discovered after conversations with our attorneys and auditors that the costs of that are quite high at this point, so that we, it, it might be something we can obviously do at some point, but it is time-consuming and potentially costly, so their recommendation, especially from our auditors, at this time, was to at least create a separate bank account within Rhodes Education that would be very clearly, as you mentioned, separate from public funds. And we will also establish with EdTech a separate resource code to use for donations that come in here, to mark them specifically as the sort of, you know, it's in the separate account. It is unrestricted. It is, you know, through Rhodes Education, donations and fundraising bank account is where the monies will go in and then subsequently come out of, as there are expense needs that are identified. But at this point, establishing a second bank account that is separate seems to be the most kind of cost-effective first step at being able to do these things while we're still investigating and discussing the possibility of a foundation, if that's something we wanted to do in the future.
I anticipate this would have minimal transactions. I know there's a lot of detail here, so the initial gift, I think, will be deposited in this, Board Member Holmes. I'll prep it up in two. Now, I think this is something in January we can discuss as board members, what this is used for, who approves expenses from it, what types of things are we looking to support. So there's a lot of questions. I, it's a little bit of a bait, but I'd appreciate if the board authorized an account for this. And then, maybe Steve Uly, or whoever wants to participate, we start talking about this , maybe I could appoint like an ad hoc committee or something to start working on this, and whoever's interested to work on it, it's great. And maybe we have some thoughts for January, so the staff doesn't, I don't want staff to put a lot of time into this. This is more something that we could spend time on. So that was it.
The only question I got is, when you get into these alternative bank account type things, you're opening doors, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but it opens up doors that could have a problem in the future about how money is spent and who's doing it, and I'm not saying anything that would happen, but it does make it more scary. So my question would be, is how is it audited? Who's still assigned for what? You know, it's used, I'm not, we do it here for some reason.
We're gonna have to have similar.
I need to buy a new, and so forth, and it's not really accounted for by anybody. And that's my only, the vagueness of, when you get into these areas, it's really, potentially, you're opening up an area that could go wrong at some time in the future. So that's the only area I believe concerns about in that area. I don't want to get too vague about the whole thing, and then.
Agreed.
Somebody can decide, they're gonna say, I spent money for that.
Yeah, we're gonna have to have policies as to, you know, who gets to decide and how it's decided, who withdraws and who writes.
And it's somehow part of the audit, I guess, is that, are we contracted with the auditors to do the same thing, and we just have to pay them separately? Or, I don't know.
Well, I think this thing's starting out, it's gonna have three transactions a year. I don't want to spend 20 grand on an audit account, $3,000.
Well, I, I can speak to the audit a bit here. Since this is just another bank account under Rhodes Education Organization, there are no increased audit costs for it. It is just audited as part of Rhodes Education's financials. It just adds one extra account that they have to look at, but it doesn't increase our overall costs.
Okay, but they would look at it like any other town.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, I, Tom, I'm just wondering what the, your, I think your point is interesting, but even if we open up a foundation, it's still gonna incur those questions.
Right.
So administratively, we have to have all the little policies and laws in place so that we can answer all the questions that anybody asks.
I just don't want to overcomplicate this. We'll be the board of it.
Here's my, my other point that I just wanted to make is that already, we have fund accounting various governmental agencies, say you must buy air conditioning equipment with this, and we abide by that. But when you get into philanthropic support, you might be getting some micro gifts to, oh, I want to support student meals, for instance. And you sort of have to have a, not sort of, you must have a, a fund.
Resource.
That is, this is the student meal fund, and if a student needs it, I'm so-and-so's able to distribute 20 bucks to that student, or whatever. Maybe that's just something we want to do. Maybe get something bigger, like the New York Travel Fund, that has to have its own fund. So the chart of accounts is going to explode, and just so Liz knows, because all these great ideas that we just heard, in my mind, was, oh, there's a fund, there's a fund, there's a fund, there's 30 funds that were potential for today.
A university, which I've dealt with some of this, somebody will contribute a large amount of money for a certain kind of program, and then their program later on goes away. They don't need it anymore, but the money can only be used for that program, which doesn't exist. And now, what are they gonna do? And they, that, they learn later on to try and get it, so if this program doesn't exist anymore, can we still use it? The university was stuck with some of those areas, they, because it was said it's targeted for, you know, meals at a certain place, in that restaurant or whatever, doesn't exist anymore. Now, what do we do with the money? So you get into these complicated areas, so forth, and you've dealt with this.
I should say, those are old gift agreements with donors.
Yes, yeah.
We've learned a lot in our industry in the last 50 years, and no, nobody wrote those gift agreements.
Right, but I'm just saying, you get into that very messy area sometimes.
I'd be delighted if we got, that, we're getting away at, I was, I was thinking like having a pot of a couple thousand dollars, that if Ms. Gaskell wanted to go to some political conference or something, a lot more. You know, we could send her with these dollars, or if we wanted to do something special for our teachers from our foundation, we could do something that we couldn't have done for public. That's just things like that to start out.
True unrestricted funds should be the executive director's ability to say, okay, I want to help this program, or I want to go to a conference that I couldn't go to.
And with the outreach that we have through this, you know, there will be more than just three or four little entries, depending on how quickly this one's going.
Yes.
But I don't expect that we're gonna be taking 20 different restricted funds, or 20 different funds. I mean, we're gonna start this, we may one day. You're right, down the line.
We may this year.
For that, well, I don't know. Okay, so.
Could I chime in a little bit here with just the, the plan? So we, we already have things in place for restricted donations. If we do have a donation that says it must be used for this purpose, that goes through our regular pre-existing, we, we already have things in place for that. This new bank account is only supposed to be for the unrestricted donations.
Okay, got it. So that's, that's the item, and then I will appoint a committee.
Then just ask follow-up to Liz. Does that include, sorry, would this bank account be used for restricted philanthropic as opposed to government?
We already have a setup for that. Restricteds.
Restricted philanthropic gifts will go into this bank account too? Or purely unrestricted?
I don't know. That's why I need a subcommittee to talk about it.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Purely unrestricted is, is the, the proposed plan that Jana and I had discussed for this new bank account, and that we're proposing to you at this time, with, it would, this bank account would be purely for unrestricted donations.
Because we already have a mechanism to track and utilize restricted philanthropic donations.
Yes.
That's in our account code structure.
So if I donate money to go to the New York thing, that, as I go to the restricted one?
Yeah, that, we, we could.
And we have a mechanism to take your money.
Oh, could just say, I'm just giving you money.
Already, so it's not gonna have to land.
Well, I can't, if I don't target the money.
Correct.
Although that'll be more, that'll be a harder thing to sell. Usually it's for something I want to give, which is messy.
But for example, what Ralph's matching with his company, that was unrestricted, and we need a place to put it.
And I think if you want to give money to feed students, or you want to give money to have a scholarship for a teacher to get, that's gonna go to our normal, that's all like legit educational stuff. I'm thinking more gifts for teachers, or that we can't use taxpayer money. We want to send Janet to some political conference that needs to influence. We can't use our dollars for that. Those are the kind of things I was thinking about using this pot for, strategic, as opposed to the true philanthropic and, and grant organizations that might give to our kids, but they can run through the pivot accounts. And those are all.
It's already set up. We can already do all that. It's the things that fall into the category of the potential, like Mr. Lewis just said, a gift to public funds, right? I, you know, nothing pivot money can go towards me doing some kind of political support of somebody. That has to be, I can't even use my email for that, my pivot email for that. But there might be an interest for the non-for-profit of Rhodes Education Organization for me to go do that, but you can't pay for it out of public dollars. So that's just one extreme example, right?
But is there a reason that there needs to be this separate bank account?
Yes.
Yes.
And the attorneys.
You cannot mix up, no, these dollars with public dollars, because they're public.
Because every mail's public, unless it's a donation that's restricted.
Once it's in pivots, coppers, as opposed to this new account that's just Rhodes Education Organization, the non-for-profit, once it's in pivot, it's restricted to many things that you can't, you know, no misuse of public funds. It becomes a public fund, basically.
So we want to keep it very clean. So these are all the policies we need to work out. I appreciate us wanting to have a committee meeting during the board meeting.
Question. How does that fit within the framework of Rhodes?
So the idea being Rhodes Education Organization is a kind of holding nonprofit that owns Pivot Charter School, right? So many of the, we sit as that both kind of school board and the board of Rhodes Education Organization. So the thought, this being, is an account off of Rhodes Education Organization, aside from Pivot Charter School. So the thought being, Rhodes Education Organization could do lots of things. We could do childcare. We could do ride sharing. We could do all kinds of things. We've never ventured. Our primary focus is Pivot Charter School. So this is starting an account that could do many things. So that's how I see it occurring. I can even see in our board meetings, we'd have the Pivot Agenda, and then we'd recess to this thing. That's what I'm thinking. That make sense?
Yeah. And, uh, I was thinking Rhodes and kids. And who else in business?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're right.
Who knows about business?
Right.
I mean, it's sort of, and kids are the benefactor of Rhodes, yes.
Actually, they're benefactors of Pivot. That, that makes it a little bit clearer. Like, you've got Rhodes, and you have Pivot Schools, right? Kids benefit from the Pivot Schools. Rhodes oversees the Pivot Schools. Now Rhodes can also oversee other things.
For kids.
And spend money on other things for kids or otherwise. Yeah.
But not necessarily.
Right.
Correct.
That's right. That's right. Okay, so I would like, are there volunteers of board members, we have two, that would like to think this through a little more and have a report for us in January? Okay, would you and OJ do that? Okay, and then, that'd be great. And maybe, and you, okay. Well, I can't have five board members. Okay, so OJ and Steve would be great.
That's perfect.
If you could do that, and that's your facilities committee that hasn't had a meeting for a while, so you can also be our, what are we gonna call it?
Financial facility.
Perfect. Refer to the facilities and foundation committee. Okay, perfect. That's great.
Well, in a, in a different way, we carry them to a very flat, you're.
That's right.
Yeah.
You did, now you're perfect. That's super. Okay, thank you both. That's terrific. Then the action would be to open a new checking account for donations. We'll leave it at that. The committee will hammer that more from there. So I'll, I'll move that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, this is Martell. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. Next, Liz, county, Riverside County Certification and Signatures.
Every year.
Every.
Yes, this is our annual reauthorization of the individuals who can sign for things in our Galaxy financial system, such as accounts payable, checks, and payroll. So this form you are likely quite familiar with, and it's just updated with today's date. They do require this every year, and the signers are not proposed to change at this time, so myself and Executive Director Jana Gaskell, both for accounts payable, as well as payroll-related authorization of payments that need to be done through the Galaxy financial system.
Yep, let's get her here. Okay, any questions? Okay, any member of the public who should speak on our certification of signatures? Hearing none, then I'll ask for a motion to approve this. We decided, right? This is not a.
Uh, there does need to be a motion to approve the two signers as listed on.
Okay, got it.
I have a question. Is this just for Riverside?
Yes. Yes.
No, I wonder why, just.
This is for the Galaxy thing. We all see them different.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Okay, then have a motion to approve the signatures of staff.
So, move.
Thank you, second, Mr. Segal, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, next, we have the unaudited actuals for each of our sites. So, I'll turn this over to Liz. I would say, one of the things I do every year as board chair is I could have a conversation with our auditor. Lily Wong is our auditor, and we had a great conversation this year for about a half hour. And she was very complimentary to Liz and our team about their transparency and the record keeping and how the financials were in order. So, I want to compliment you, Liz, and Jana, and Brittany, and the team who is involved in this. Very clean audit, transparent audit. You were all forthright. I expressed to the board his absolute confidence in the staff. And we just had a really good discussion. I mean, even she noted our financial position, how strong it was, and we talked about that relative to other schools that she works with. So, all around, a very positive conversation, and our auditor was very impressed by our operation. And so, congratulations, Liz. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Um, so in the financial update, we looked at, you know, sort of the ovary, ovary, wow, overview and summary. I tied two words together there.
What did you say?
The overview and summary.
Laughing on the reactive. All right, thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. So, the overview and summary of each school's financials for the fiscal year that ended June 30th. Um, and so here we have the official documents that were submitted in September. They are quite detailed, and as you can see, as we go through here, you know, just kind of, there is the summary at the beginning, and then it breaks it down into individual categories and everything like that. So, these are the official reports that were submitted, and they get submitted on, by September 15th every year. And then these are the financials that our auditors are then reviewing and that go into the final audit report. There may be some small adjustments, especially related to things that, that the Galaxy financial system cannot do. So, there's, we always do have some small audit adjustments, but these are sort of the, the documents that are submitted that the auditors then kind of go off of when determining if there are adjustments that need to be made. Um, all of these were submitted in the SACS program, the School Account Code System. They've transitioned now to, you may notice these look slightly different. Even though the North Bay, North Valley, and San Diego schools all utilize the Charter School alternative form for the unaudited actuals and budgeting, they now require us to submit that alternative form report in the SACS system, which is the same system where we have to report Riverside's financials from Galaxy. The Riverside report still does look quite different because it's a different type of submission in the same system. But I just wanted to, to point out in case anyone had noticed that the, the reports for North Bay, North Valley, and San Diego look a little bit different. That's why. The, the state changed the method of actually submitting the reports for the unaudited actuals. So, they look more similar to the ones for Riverside than they had in the past.
What is the negative source of funds? What is that?
Uh, in which report?
I was looking at North Bay, but it's, I think it goes through all of the three that are similar.
Is there a, a certain line item?
So, it's stating prior years, the negative.
Ah, yes, okay. Right, yes. So, sometimes with prior years, the adjustments are based, usually when this happens is based on ADA. So, we report our average daily attendance in April, and then the state certifies the amount that we should receive in LCFF funds, such as state aid, in June. However, we also then have an update to that report in June after the school year is ended and any final adjustments to attendance have been made. So, sometimes that final ADA after we've had the whole school year completed is slightly higher or slightly lower. So, this state aid being negative generally would mean that we had a downward adjustment of ADA. So, the amount that they had apportioned and that we thought we were due in June is downgraded slightly because our attendance or ADA was slightly lower in the end after we had all of the data in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions?
I appreciate it. I was looking at the various forms. The Riverside one looked weird, and then you had another reference under the other item, putting it back in the regular, I call it regular form. So, I was able to figure it out, so thank you for that.
Okay, great. Are there any members of, members of the public that would like to speak on items four point four, five, six, seven, or eight? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to ratify the unaudited actuals for each school site. We'll take this as one action with the minutes for collect individual votes. Second, Ms. Martel, thank you, Mr. Holmes, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thanks for what I add. Well, you get a clean audit. That's an amazing feat.
Yeah, great work, Liz and Jen. I mean, really, Lily had, this was really a great things to say about our organization and the staff.
It's no easy trip to pull it off, so thank you.
Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. Item five one, we have the consent agenda minutes, check registers, and board policies. Any, whether you wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? None? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
Thank you, Martel, second, Southern, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. So, we'll move into closed session. We have several items under closed session. We have a discipline matter. We have labor negotiations with unrepresented employees and discussion on valuation of the executive director. Are there members of the public that wish to speak on any item in closed session? The board will be here. Hearing none, then I'll recess the meeting and we'll go to closed session. Thank you. Okay, we're back in session, and the board did meet in closed session on three items. There is a reportable action. The board voted unanimously to approve the settlement agreement regarding confidential student matter case number 2024-002. Uh, and so that is my report. And our next meeting is in Santa Rosa on January 31st, and we'll also have a meeting on February 1st and 2025. If we know their business, our meeting's adjourned.